Good evening and welcome to the Budget and Finance Committee Budget Hearings. Today is Monday, May 19th. It is now, sorry, 7:15. Voting members present, I have to my left Counselor Wendy Luzon, to my right, the Vice Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee Vivian Marmo, and Council President Giovanni Rodriguez. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may either attend here in the City Council Chamber, or use our Facebook or YouTube accounts. While this meeting is hybrid, we do want to iterate, or emphasize, I should say, that myself as the Chair in this committee is requesting that all who will be coming before the committee for budget hearing be here in person. Unless there is an absolute emergency, department heads should be here in person. If they cannot make it, your hearing will be rescheduled. At this point, can you join me in the pledge? Anyways, Counselors, right into the agenda. We have the first new business, Item 164-25, Fiscal Year 2026 Municipal Budget, that was brought up, that's being presented to us by our Acting Cafo Ramona Saballos and our Mayor Brian A. Depeña. We do have our Cafo here with us this evening, and I would like to her to come up, introduce herself, and just introduce, do a short introduction of the budget.
Good evening, Counselors. Ramona Saballos, Acting Cafo. Before you today, we have the FY26 Budget. It outlines the income and expenses. It is a balanced budget. It has a proposition two and a half increase in our levy, as well as at 1.2 million projected new growth for FY26. I will go into more detail of the revenues and how we derived the detailed calculations for your sake and for anybody watching on the media. For now, we would like to start with the first department on the schedule. It is the Administration and Finance, which is made up of aid departments, Office of Budget and Finance, Comptroller's Office, Purchasing Office, Information Technology Assessor's Office, Treasurer's Office, Tax Collectors, and Office of Personnel. This is all on page 31 of the budget book, if you want to follow along.
Page 31, before we continue, Cafo, we do have someone that would like to public participate, so I'm going to allow that real quick, and then we're going to continue with. I should have called you over first. We have School Committee Member Lennon Roa here with us this evening, who would like to say a few words regarding the proposed budget.
Okay, so Lennon Roa is my name. I live at 36 Columbus Avenue in Lawrence, Massachusetts. I'm here today not as a school committee member, I'm here as a citizen today. And today, my words are reflecting of myself and myself only. So, having said that, I've been able to review the whole budget. Thank God, I was able to now. So now that I reviewed it one time, I have many things, many questions to ask. The main thing that I'm asking for you guys is to consider, last year, we had an increase of 4% in the budget. Accordingly, and proposed by the mayor was 8%, and you guys approved 4%, that's why it went up last year. This year, it looks like it's going to go up again. The propose, the mayor's going to propose more than likely be at 2.5% or more. If we do cola on this, we may have an increase of more than 4% or around 4% this year again. Now, I have two businesses already. I'm an owner of two businesses in the city. I'm also a homeowner in the city. I don't know how many tax, how much taxes I can pay, how much more, I have no idea. I want to say that it's no more than what I'm paying right now. But having said that, I have a problem, a serious problem with this proposal. And it's the fact that I got here to Lawrence in 2014. I got here homeless. I was a homeless, living in the street. And my wife, my only son at the time, and myself were in the streets, in Amesbury. And the actual Francisco Reyna, being that I'm a military retiree, got me off the streets, and they were able to accommodate me and help me, so that I can become who I am today. I got to Lawrence a year after, in 2014, that was 2013, 2014 I got here. And in two years, in one year, 11 months, 27 days, in five hours, I was a homeowner in Lawrence. I am not Superman, by no means. I have my defects, and I am also a human being, so I make mistakes too. But that's who I am, and I thank Lawrence for helping me become who I am today. Most of you did not know what I just said. Some of the stuff I said, you guys had no idea, right? So, you had no idea because I am that way. My heart belongs to Lawrence. And I'm sorry to tell you, I will not be able to be a politician in my life ever again. Two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I decided not to be a politician because I can't. My health, my personal, my family doesn't allow me to. Can't be a politician anymore. I am graduating soon. I'm going to be a lawyer. I just graduated from Northern Essex with high honors, two days ago. Honors and should have been high honors, but that's another story. So, yeah, I am going to be a lawyer. I'm a, I'm many things now. I got three jobs, you know, I do what I can. But what I'm trying to say to you is, I have a problem with this. And you guys should have a problem too. I think you guys should have a problem knowing that people like me are struggling to get on because we have two businesses, we have a home. And this raising of the taxes and raising of all of this, it affects us as business owners. So, that's what I came here to tell you today. I see many problems on that thing. I have it here. The whole budget is in my bucket, right there, with the city charter. So, the two things that I have carried for 14 days with me. Well, ever since you guys came out with it. It's been in my book. Now I study, and I don't like it. Please consider this when you guys make a decision. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Cafo, can we, before we, before we get into the first department, the Administration and Finance Division, can we go back and just have a rundown of the intro part of the budget, so the graphics and the overall proposed amount of the budget, and then we can go into the first division?
Of course. I actually have a presentation to go into the details of the expenses and the different categories, but because I thought we were focusing on the revenues today, I do not have that presentation. So, I would like to share that with you when the time comes for all the expenditures. And I do have a presentation for the revenues, which is scheduled for later on. But yeah, I'll be more than happy to go over the overall. So, page 13, it summarizes the total operating revenues, 469,611,865, and the same for the operating expenditures. We have the parking fund, the enterprise funds, starting with the parking, the airport, and the water sewer. I will review the operating revenues on tonight. I believe it's the last item on the agenda, so I will review that in detail. I have a presentation for you, unless you want me to do it now.
What I'm going to do, I would rather have you come Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, to have, to present.
To do the raw revenues?
Yeah.
Okay.
That way, because you were prepared for it tonight, I don't want to put you on the spot. But I would, you do have something for us, so I'll allow it for Wednesday, and we'll go back to it.
Okay.
And we'll review that.
Would you like me to proceed with the Budget and Finance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
So, it's, if you could please turn to page 31. It's the Administration and Finance Division. As I mentioned earlier, it's made up of aid departments. I'll start with the Budget and Finance Department. Just so you know, the instruction that was given to all the departments was to prepare a level funded budget. And then, any additional requests needed to be addressed and reviewed by the mayor and the administration. And as you can see in the Administration and Finance, there are no increases. All union negotiations expire on June 30th, 2025. So, there should not be any union increases in any of the budgets, except for step increases, and in the Public Safety Division, there are some step increases as well.
Okay, so you're, you're telling us for these aid departments, the request was for the departments to provide a level fund. I'm seeing that in the Purchasing Office, there is a $28,517 increase, as well as the IT, $17,250 increase. Treasurer's Office, about 10 grand, Tax Collector's about 6. So, can we just go?
Yes, absolutely. So, in the Purchasing Office, if you would go to page 37, there was a change in position from Principal Accounts Clerk to Assistant Purchasing Agent, and that 28,000 is based on the difference on the position.
And then for the IT?
As you remember, the non-union classification per the Collins Center, the non-union employees got an adjustment on their salaries back in 2023. And most of them had not received an adjustment on their salary. So, those were all identified in the budget for FY26. They all have a minimal increase for the non-union. The union do not have an increase reflected here, because like I said, all union negotiations end or expire on June 30th, 2025.
Council President?
Hello, can you hear me? Cafo, do you mind going over, like, the first one, 0031, 032, 33, and then allow the different department heads to come over and present their budget in detail, so we can just move along one after the other one, and then we can ask questions as it goes?
Sure, absolutely. So, we'll start with the Administration and Finance on page 32 and 33. Currently, we do have our Budget Analyst acting as an Assistant Comptroller. So, we do have a vacancy in the Office of Budget and Finance.
And a quick question. All these departments under, well, I know the answer, but just for the public. All these departments under the Administration and Finance Division report to the Cafo?
Correct.
So, whether it's you or the department head doesn't, but I understand where the Council President's coming from. Thank you.
Okay. Then we have the Comptroller's Office, which I can review as well. There's no increases here. It's pretty much level funded budget. And my Assistant Comptroller is Acting Comptroller at the moment. And the Budget Analyst is Assistant Comptroller at the moment. So, we do have a vacancy within the Budget and Finance, which is the Budget Analyst position. The next one is the Purchasing Office, and we do have our Purchasing Agent here with us.
Good evening, Counselors. Rosana de Rosario, 200 Common Street. I am the current Purchasing Agent. So, in our purchasing subdivision, we have Personal Services, and the FY26 Major's Recommendation is 179,358. As the Cafo explained, there is a change of 28,917, and that is for salary and wages permanent. There's, the change is to reflect the change of the Assistant Purchasing Agent position. We have purchase of services, and the FY26 Major's Recommendation is $10,000, same as the prior year. This is, this gets divided for $10,000 of advertising, and $3,000 for employee training. For supplies, we have $2,000 for office supplies, $1,000 for operating supplies, and $150 for books and subscriptions. Once again, there's no change between the FY25, Approved Budget, and the FY26 Major's Recommendation. Last, the other charges and expenses is dues and memberships, and this is a flat 275, same as prior years.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions for this department?
Yes.
Council President?
As I said, the position that has been, that is, that it got changed from a Account Clerk to Assistant Purchasing Agent, is that required by union, or that's something that was?
It is a unionized position. It's under union as well.
So, is that, that's part of the union negotiation that we changing the title?
I'll have the Cafo explain that over in better detail.
It's my understanding that that position was created so that in case the Purchasing Agent wasn't available, the duties of the Assistant Purchasing Agent would, should be able to cover contracts, signing, and a lot of the things that the Purchasing Agent currently does, so that there wouldn't be any lack of services to provide to the cities and the departments. So, that position actually is responsible for additional duties, and that's why it was suggested to create that position of Assistant Purchasing Agent.
So, we keeping this in person, but we changing the title and the duties?
Correct.
And that will mean extra 28,000?
Correct. It's based on the, the union scales that they have, that that position fell under.
The, the current, the current position, union, previous position was also union?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go back.
Yeah, I have a question pertaining, a follow-up question for that. The Principal Account Clerk, was this individual already doing, like, duties that would be considered like Assistant Purchasing? I don't know, because you're just, you're just, you know, you haven't been there for that long.
Yeah, so I just, I just started the position, and it's to my knowledge that, well, the Cafo can explain a little better, but it's the same, the same person that used to be the Principal Account Clerk, that is now doing the duties of an Assistant Purchasing Agent.
So, yeah, so, so as, as Principal Account Clerk, she was gaining, or things were added to her plate that was more like an Assistant Purchasing role, and this is when you guys decided it was appropriate to?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we can go to the next department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors.
And next, we have Information Technology.
Good evening, Counselors. Carlos Castillo, IT Director for the City of Lawrence, 200 Common Street. As for IT, every year, we, we do level funded, right? And if you, if you look at the numbers, that 17,000 extra, we got a raise, and, you know, it was minimum raise based on the studies that the Collins Center did. But every year that goes by, in terms of IT, we always, you know, focus on the level funded budget. If you guys have any questions, or feel free to ask.
Counselors, Council President?
Thank you. The cybersecurity position, that's going to be filled when?
I do, I think, I think I already have past six months already. I think I have to come back to you guys and allow you, you guys to approve. Because according to the attorney, it's like we have to go down the council. After a position has been vacant for more than six months, we have to come back here to council to get reapproved. And I do have the need of the cybersecurity, so I'm hoping to get that filled as soon as possible. And as you may know, I feel like I'm wearing out, because I'm actually doing it now as a director as well. So, the plan is to fill it up as soon as possible.
I'm very concerned about the position, to be honest with you, because we, we went through multiple issues in the past, and having that position in place will help tremendously to ensuring that those type of, you know, emails and stuff like that, and keep on getting those bombards by, with different things, that at least we have somebody there that is a specialist on that. But by saying that, I also need to ensure that the description and the job posting for that position reflect the need of the position, which means the need of the department, not the need of a person.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll put that in very detail. I am a CISO. I am a cybersecurity. I do have the certification for it. That's why I'm doing it now. But as I stated, I do need the help, because, I mean, as a director, there's more things that I need to focus on. And I need to spend a lot of time also in my staff, just to kind of get them up to speed, you know, provide more support, so they can better give service to, to our user community here at Lawrence. So, by saying that, if I get that opportunity of having, you know, a cybersecurity guy, then, like I said, I'll focus, and the city can move forward with technology. As you all know, you know, there's a lot of comments out there, "Yeah, Lawrence", you know, "In terms of technology, you're behind", but I do want to change that, if it's possible.
Understood.
Any other questions?
I would like to add, this is, I mean, IT is the foundation of every single agency, municipality, whatever, like, whatever work or job it is, IT is the foundation of, of that, of that work, of that job. I've said this last year, I don't think your department specifically should be level funded. I don't think it should be cut. You guys need the support. The city cannot run without IT, and I don't understand why your department does not get that support. Also, when this cybersecurity position is filled, and I'm going to look at the, the main, the main department head, if she's still our Cafo, it should be someone with experience, not someone's friend, not someone, because we're talking about IT. The entire city runs on this department. And we need to make sure that this department is filled with qualified people. And I want to make sure that you guys are doing that work, because if not, you guys go down, our entire city goes down. Said this yet last year, and I'm going to repeat this, and I'm going to continue to repeat this until everybody gets with the program, that this is the most important department that we have within our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
I would like to ask a question to the Cafo. So, currently, this position is $100,000. It's, it sounds like, you know, $100,000 nowadays is not a lot of money, but it is a lot of money. And the position is so much in need. So, now that the position has been without someone there for over six months, we have to reapprove the position. With that said, I would like you to go to your desk. Once we finish with the budget, obviously, maybe July 2nd, or July 3rd, whatever, around that time, if that happened. So, you can rework the job description. And if we have to rework on the ordinance for this position to be filled with the qualifications it requires, let's work on that, please. Because if we don't do the work that need to be done, especially on the, on the ordinance, and then that's when you're going to have people there that are not quite up there yet. But we cannot keep on paying those, those positions with somebody that is not quite providing the quality of the service that people deserve. Especially nowadays, that we increasing taxes all the way to the top, to the max, which is 2.5% of the, of the allowable amount per law. So, let's go back, July something, not pressure. Once we finish with the budget, and then rework on the ordinance, and rework on the, on the job description for this position.
Will do.
Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions or comments, concerns regarding the IT Department? Seeing none, next department.
Good evening, Counselors. Alexi Vega, Chief Assessor, 14 Cornish Road, Lawrence, Massachusetts. Before I begin my budget presentation, I'd like to use this opportunity to personally thank my two staff members, Maria Halloran and Amy Valdez, for their support every day, your professionalism, and high quality of customer service that you provide our customers and to our public entities. And you come in every day shining, despite, as the Cafo had mentioned, no salary increases, but I hope that when the union sits down with the Cafo team, that you negotiate a fair and a well-deserved salary increase. So, I'll begin on page 40 for the Assessor's Office. Uh, so I'll begin on page forty for the assessor's office. It's a couple, um, about five line items, um, starting with, um, personnel services. Um, so there is a, um, small salary increase for the non-union, uh, position, uh, of twenty-four hundred and eighty-four dollars, which represents about two and a half percent. The longevity was, uh, static, uh, for FY twenty-six. At fifty-seven hundred, we have, um, two employees, two of the four employees, uh, have, um, over twenty-five years of service in the City of Lawrence. Um, so they're, um, allowed a longevity, uh, payment in December. Um, the clothing allowance you see there is for the clerical union, and that's by agreement. And that's, um, was, um, three hundred and it was bumped up to four hundred. Uh, the next line item is, uh, purchases and services for employee training. We do have, uh, three full-time assessors, um, and they're required to have their Massachusetts accreditation, uh, designation and maintain those credits. Those classes are continued to increase. Um, and, uh, we make sure that every assessors have an opportunity to take these courses, whether they're on-site or, um, on Zoom. So there was a, again, a small minor increase, uh, from twenty-three hundred to twenty-five hundred. Uh, professional services was a big one. As you recall, in FY twenty-five, there was a five-year revell mandated by, mandated by the Department of Revenue. That, um, is over, very successful, um, and we go back to intramurial adjustments. For the next four years, there'll be intramurial adjustments, and that's why we, um, reduced, um, professional services by a hundred and two thousand four hundred. If I may add, probably the only department that's gonna have a budget cut. Um, supplies and services, um, we do send out a massive amount of, uh, income and expense forms to taxpayers, forms of less for personal property, uh, businesses. Uh, so those prices have, uh, gone up. So we asked for a very slight increase, uh, from, uh, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and basically rounding it up to eight hundred bucks. Um, last, um, is the, uh, other charges and expenses, uh, for in-state travel. Um, like I said, uh, we do have courses that are available on, uh, online, uh, but most of them now are in-person. And so you see, uh, uh, an increase for travel, uh, for mileage expenses. And then you see an increase in dues and membership, uh, from three hundred to five hundred. So overall budget from FY twenty-six was four hundred, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, three ninety-nine. FY twenty-six is five hundred and forty-seven thousand, eighty dollars, a decrease of one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, that pretty much concludes the assessors' portion of the budget, but I'm willing to ask, uh, answer any questions you may have.
Councilors, any questions, comments, concerns? Council president.
Just a quick question on the, on the assistant assessor that I, that I see that, uh, the position gave a reduction of a thousand, five hundred and thirty-two? Decrease on the salary?
Correct.
As a union agreement or something, or?
Yes, that's a clerical, uh, union position. So basically there are step, five steps in every grade. Um, and the next person that comes in, one person was there, was at a higher step in that grade. So it's gonna be the same grade, grade fifteen, but at each step as they progress throughout the year, uh, will increase. This person that left was pretty much at the middle, at the top range, and the next person may come in, uh, a lo- a lower range, so.
Is that retired person that now is gonna be a new hire?
Correct. There is a vacancy in the assessors' office. We just, uh, lost someone that, um, resigned, so we're gonna be posting that position again.
Uh, that will make a big difference. I thought it was like a reduction on salary for somebody that's been there for so many years.
Uh, no, no.
Questions? Thank you.
Any other councilors? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We also thank Maria for the help.
Yeah. Next apartment. We have the treasurer's office.
Good evening, councilors. Pearl Ortiz, Treasurer Collector for the City of Lawrence, um, two hundred Common Street. Um, so I come before you to present the treasurer's office, um, fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget. For the most part, the budget, it is level funded. Um, you will see that there is a salary increase on the one position that's non-union. Um, so this is kind of comparable with everybody within the same, um, range in, in responsibility, as well as any local treasurer collectors within, within the local municipalities in the areas as well. And I see your confusion, Stephanie, in your face. You're probably thinking, why is it like half of a person? Is that?
No, 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 that wasn't it. No, 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 no.
Cause it gets brought up every single year.
But since we're in the topic, that's not why, but you wanna, it says it does get brought up every year, too. Just wanna explain that quickly.
Yes, so, um, as treasurer collector, I basically oversee both departments, and both departments have a different, um, budget. So hence why half of my position and salary is in one, on the treasurer's side, as well as in the collector's side. Um, I do oversee eight employees. Um, so that consists of four collectors and three treasurer, um, treasurer's side employees. Um, so our office is pretty, we take care of a lot of things. And as you guys all know, we deal with a lot of our constituents. Um, we get the front end of most of the constituents that come in with any questions, concerns, send out any bills. But kind of to jump back into the treasurer's side, um, all of my, the treasurer does deal with all of the departments within the city. So a lot of the expenses that you will see here are basically associated with citywide expenses. Um, hence why you will see the increase for the lease payment. So that's for the US Postal Office. That's a contractual agreement. So we just signed an agreement about two years ago with the fourth year, with the thirty-year and fourth year going up in, in price. So that's the increase of the two thousand, two hundred and fifty for the lease payment. In regards to the increase on the postage, that's also an increase. Um, as you are aware, the US Postal Office will be increasing their rates mid-July from sixty-six cents to seventy-five cents, I believe, or seventy-eight. Um, so hence why there's an increase on that. So any mailing that gets done for most of the city's departments, with the exception of the elections office, um, as well as the school department, does get sent out through my budget. So that we carry the, the monetary aspect from that. Um, regarding the advertisement, that's also level funded, and that's gonna be, um, based on some tax liens. Advertisement that we do have to do, that's mandated by Mass General Law, so we do utilize advertisement from that perspective. The employee training is, um, heavily has to do with Massachusetts Collector Treasure Association. As a treasurer and collector, um, I do, I do partake, I am part of the association. So, um, part of my contract agreement, um, coming into the city was basically to get certified. So the city does offer me the reimbursement option. So when I do go to the school in August, um, there is an annual school that takes place once, one week in August. So that's part of the schooling, and then we sit through the test, um, on year four. So I've already been certified as a collector, so I'm working on the treasurer's side. And then also the goal is to get the assistant treasurer collector to also start going to these courses and get certified as well. Any questions?
Council Marmo. Um, do you mind going into details regarding the advertising? Uh, what sources does your department use? Is it multiple methods? And what is normally like the price range, uh, when you go into advertising?
So when we go for advertisement, normally we like to use a media that basically spams around the region. Um, as you know, we have a lot of tax, uh, homeowners that do not reside here. Um, so because we're advertizing mainly like tax titles, so basically part of the tax title process is you need to advertise any property that has delinquent taxes before you put a lien on the property. We usually resort out to, so I sent out an email, so I reach out to Roomba, I, I reach out to, um, Ego Tribune. There's two others. I can't think of the name at, at the top of my head right now. But we do reach out to them, get a quote, and based on pricing and based on basically the, the, the recipients or the homeowner's address, I try to gauge it to see who gets the most attention. We also post those advertisements on our website, so we do utilize the city's website for that.
Is there a fee for that?
Not for the, not for the city's website. So I just kind of send a copy of the advertisement from the local newspaper, um, and give it to, um, the IT department who then posts it. So usually the range with our advertisement varies. If we have, if we have to take a full page, it could vary anywhere from five thousand to six thousand, sometimes even less. Um, and that's because we're talking about over a hundred properties. Um, the goal has always been to narrow down and bring down the amount of properties that we do advertise. Um, so we have been doing a lot more internal mailing and sending friendly reminders before we get to that point. Um, one thing we have found, unfortunately, a lot of people kind of disregard those letters. Um, and unfortunately, we do have to go through the advertisement process. Um, so from that perspective, it does help, it does decrease the amount of people that we advertise. When I first started, we were advertising about two hundred and eighty parcels. We're down to like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and thirty. So definitely making headways there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Council president.
Through you, Madam Chair, and just, just on the purchase and services, uh, do you mind explaining a little bit, a little bit more details of the lease payment, service bureau, property taxes, and banking services?
Yep, of course. So, and the lease payment, as I previously mentioned, that's the Pitney Bowles machine. So we have, uh, Pitney Bowles machine in the Budget and Finance Office that gets utilized for all of our mailing. Um, so we have a contractual agreement. We leased out the equipment rather than buy it outright. As you may know, it's, sometimes it's just easier to get fixtures and upgrades and stuff through the company itself than having to do that internally. In regards to the service bureau for the property taxes, so that's more associated with court fees, um, court costs, land fees. Also, the, 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 the RMV registry, there's a fee also associated. So anytime that we, we put like an excise reaches a certain point, that's, that also gets funded through there. So I can definitely provide you a list of, of the total costs and services that gets posted through that process. Um, for the banking fees, um, this has been something that we've tried to unwind throughout the year. Um, unfortunately, there are some banking fees. Right now, we haven't been getting as many banking fees, and that's usually heavily due to the interest income. Um, the, so because the interest is so high right now, what we've done is we kind of offset what our expenses would be with some of the interest that are earned. So we have some non-interest bearing accounts that offset those costs. So that's why you'll see, if you look at prior years, prior to when, you know, the, the rates went up so high, you would see that our rates, our fees were a lot higher, and they have gone down drastically. Unfortunately, with the market being so unstable right now, we don't know what's gonna happen with the interest. So kind of touching or reducing that number probably right now doesn't make sense. In regards to the postage, as I previously mentioned, that's for the mailing of all city mail. So that's AP checks, um, vendor checks, um, any payroll checks, and that's for the school and the city. Um, advertisement we just discussed, as well as training. Any other line items on here?
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we can continue with the treasurer, uh, tax collector's office.
Well, here I am again. Um, so for the tax collector's office, as previously mentioned, um, obviously the, the salary increases, it's comparable with anyone within the role and the responsibilities. Um, and then on here, we have a decrease in the longevity. And that's, um, one of my staff that was here for over ten years has been promoted to a different department. So I'm no longer paying, um, longevity for the current staff that I have. They, they all have been here under ten years. Um, regarding the increase in printing and mailing, that also has to do with the postage. However, on this side, it's more, uh, has more to do with the mailing of all of our bills. So real estate, personal property, what, um, water and sewer, et cetera. Um, so that's, that's basically, um, reflecting the increase in rate for that. Um, employee training is similar to what was discussed, also part of the Mass Treasurer Collector Association and any internal training that I, we have for the staff as well. I'm not sure if you want me to go over like office supplies, et cetera.
Council president.
Quick question on the, uh, on the printing and mailing. I know that you guys send to all those citywires, uh, citywide, uh, mail. Do you even do mix match with all the departments to see what information needs to be sent out? And then makes those bills to all the different headquarters?
You mean like an insert on the, on the bills?
Yeah.
So we have sent out notifications, and I know, um, when I used to attend the meetings with all the department head, I did remind them of that. Um, there hasn't been much inquiries or interest in it. Um, but I can definitely send out an information to all the department head moving forward, just to kind of remind them that that's still an option. The caveat to that is, as long as it does not increase the, the, the postage, then we're, we should be able to at least send a one-pager. And obviously, as you know, it can't be anything political or anything to that effect.
I'm referring more like, uh, informational stuff and that stuff. Could be anything that you actually support and to support the community.
Yeah, we can definitely, I can definitely make my rounds. We do have some bills going out, um, for the July first preliminary bills. So we can definitely work with department heads on that to see if there's anything.
Uh, council president.
They send calendars, uh, like it could be calendar related to the recycling. It could be calendar related to, uh, uh, to anything related, you know, taxes, perhaps the, uh, when the, when the, uh, the, the extra taxes are done or due, or perhaps, uh, when the, uh, the variants are. Nobody knows about a date in February, uh, when, you know, stuff like that, that it's a reminder, uh, to the people.
Yeah, we can def- I know we've sent out in the past the recycling calendar, as well as the trash calendar. We've coordinated with the previous recycling coordinator, um, on that front. But in regards to the excise tax bill, the, one of the biggest concern that we find is, as I previously mentioned, most of the ta- the homeowners, um, don't reside here, and you have a lot of people that own vehicle that don't own a home. So we're basically, we can send it out, kind of reminding them of that, but we're targeting the wrong, um, the wrong population by doing so. But, but there's definitely information we can send out, so we can work with you guys as well to see if there's anything that you feel like the constituents that you service don't feel that they're getting enough information of.
Yeah, all right. We had, uh, the reason that I'm asking is because a couple of, a couple of minutes ago, a couple of minutes ago, we were discussing that these, how to get information over to the public around a specific area related to parking. So we were, I was just thinking abroad, like, how can we kind of like, you know, use different resources from the, from the city? So we can get that information over.
Yeah. We can always highlight for them to kind of revisit the city's website and where to get that type of information. I do find that we do have a lot of the information that they need, um, but a lot of people just don't access our city's website, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Council Luzon.
Just a quick question, now that you, nothing to do with your project, but,
No worries.
How do you know that not a lot of people access the city website? Do we have a, do you keep a track? Not to you, I guess, but I have related to you, Bob, to your department.
I, I can speak on, on our department. Some of, well, most, there's a lot of information that is on the city's website that we do get called for, and people do come in personally. So that's kind of how we gauge it, because they're coming in person, or they're calling us for the information that's readily available. But I can't speak on to the, how much, um, traffic we have with the site. That would be an IT question.
Based on what Madam Chair mentioned at the beginning about the, the importance of the IT and the city moving to that, uh, stage of, I just wanted to know that, but perhaps in the next meeting, we can get more information about how many people access our city website?
Yeah, I can pitch around a little bit for it.
Yeah. Based on your opinion on- Based on your opinion on moving the city forward.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Luzzon. I have a comment not pertaining to your website, I mean, website, your budget, but since you are in front of me and, and I have your boss in front of me, I do want to give you a compliment, um, that I received last week from a resident that reached out to your office, left a message. Your office got back to this person right away, and they were just so surprised because they weren't expecting to get a call back so quickly from the city. And this is something that, you know, we don't usually hear about the positives as much, so I wanted to make sure to share this with you, and, and this person was very grateful.
Thank you, I do appreciate that. Um, I do have a hard working staff. We, you know, we're, one of the first ones in, last ones out, right? And we do try to make all attempts to service our constituents et cetera, as fast and as accurately as possible. Um, so I do appreciate when there are, you know, compliments that come forward.
Especially relating to tax, because who really likes taxes?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon, evening.
Alright, um, next office, we have the Office of Personnel.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Carol Garcia, Director of Personnel. I'll be turning your attention to, uh, page forty-six. We are level funded, uh, there was a change of six thousand nine hundred dollars, and that's derived from salary increases as alluded to by our acting CFO, and a lo- and as well as longevity. Uh, we do have an employee that just hit their ten-year mark, so that's where the one thousand five hundred dollars comes from. Um, however, it is offset by our, um, some reductions in supplies and employee physicals. That is all. Any questions?
Counselors, any questions, comments, concerns? Counsel Marmo.
Um, I'll ask the, the same question in regards to advertising. Do you, I just want to, I'm just curious in terms of, um, is it any different depending on each department, considering that it's on a either case-by-case basis, or depending on what the work at hand is? What are the methods that the city are using to promote, um, you know, job postings?
Absolutely, that's a great question. So we use a, a number of, um, number of things. For example, right now, we are in the search of an acting CFO. Um, we are using the Collins Center, that's, that's one, one way. We also do use listservs that do, um, require a, um, a certain amount to be paid. Uh, MMA, and, um, for example, I have another one that's being sent to the Lowell Bar Association, Lawrence Bar Association, uh, so on and so forth.
Then my second question is, um, all the increases that I'm seeing, uh, on each, uh, position, it's just like your basic, um, job, uh, pay increase?
Yes, so as, uh, our acting CFO had just alluded to earlier to, today, she mentioned that there was going to be a change that was, should have been from twenty twenty-four, so it's actually going to be reflected, or twenty twenty-three should be reflected in twenty twenty-five budget. So it's just from the, from the Collins Center increase, it should be reflected in this year's budget.
Thank you. Um, Counsel, Counsel President.
Can you go over, um, the, the other purchase and services from your department, can you go over that?
Uh, so our other typically goes into, um, that's a great question, actually. Our other, it would, it would all depend, and I think that this is a question that the CFO had, because I wasn't part of what the other was, um, was using, that was prior to my time. So I, I actually don't remember off the top of my head what it was that, what was being calculated as other.
Other purchase services, that includes, uh, employee services that we provide to our employees?
I thought he was meaning other expenses.
Oh, no, other purchase services, correct? Thirty thousand?
Other, other, yep, other charges and expenses.
So we, uh, we buy subscriptions for different things as EAPS, which I believe is an employee, um, program that we provide to our employees for, um, support and so forth. Um, other things are, uh, fees for our workers' comp. Um, there is a, a workers' comp fee that we have to pay every month, so that's also in that category.
There's also another, I don't know, I just brought that up, we also need other, uh, sub, uh, training services. So for example, we have, we just sent out, or my office just sent out, uh, sorry. My office just sent out some training for some employees after we received, um, some, some complaints, let's say, for a lack of a better term. So that was a, a service that we use, tralient, I believe is how it's pronounced. So those are services that we use, or, or training services that we use, um, with employees after we receive certain, um, complaints of the sort. And that's typically how HR uses that, um, in order to reduce or minimize any issues within the department. Uh, we've also just sent out a couple of others, and I do intend on, on, um, having inspectional services, DPW, and a couple of other, uh, um, departments, um, use that same service in conflict resolution, house-to-work environments, how to deal with irate customers, and so on and so forth. So a lot of, also, um, the tax collector and the clerk's office is going to be, are using some of those services.
Okay, so just, uh, tomorrow, after tomorrow, do you mind sending me like a quick email on the meaning of it? Like, uh, what you, you just mentioned. I mean, it's something that we never did-
Can you send it to the entire committee, please? Of the tralient?
No, just then, in general, the other purchase services and that way we can, because I never asked that question in the past for this department. And if I think about it, it's kind of like, you know, it's something unique, so that, uh, it's just used for that department.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I think you are all set. Thank you.
CFO, even though you have to stay here, but I think at least your department, your division is all set. Um, I'm gonna ask the counselors one more time, is there any other questions or comments overall that you have for our admin and finance division? Um, that our CFO couldn't answer, or, or get us an answer, she does not have an answer at the moment? Um, we will be prepared to hear, uh, her presentation on Wednesday, and it's a little bit backwards this year, but, uh, that's okay. Uh, so if you do have questions regarding the revenues and the, the expenditures, um, the generic presentation will be given on Wednesday.
Council President.
A quick question through you, Madam Chair. On page seven of the budget, do you mind going over, CFO, to that, to that page?
Page seven? Yes.
Page, you have the appropriation and order and expenditure. And when I look at last year's, uh, page nine of the send appropriation order and expenditures, there is a, a difference concept-wise was you got, where you're getting the five million dollars. So I'm seeing that last year you get a five million dollars amount to balance the budget out of the free cash. And on this year, you're getting the five million dollars amount to balance the budget out of debt, uh, reserve. That's a huge difference.
Yes. So if I can explain, um, when we had the ARPA money, the fifty-seven million, uh, we did do some transfers last year, and one of the transfers was twenty million dollars to the stabilization reserve for debt service. And that is intended to be the debt service related to the two new schools and the new police station. So that's what the five million dollars is, it's coming from the debt service. So we're not using free cash to balance the budget. We're using the five million dollars related to the two new schools and the police station. The debt service associated with those three projects, from the debt service, uh, which is one of the items we will discuss in a future meeting. Um, so basically, we transfer the money from free cash, which is one of the, the transfers we did last year, which was twenty million dollars to the debt service stabilization reserve specifically, specifically set aside for the two new schools and the police station.
So let me ask a quick question then, uh, is this five million dollars gonna be used only for the service or to balance the budget?
It's for debt service.
To, for, to that, for, for debt service, okay, can you, can you show me on the book where is the five million dollars being used for that service?
Yes. So it's actually in two places, on page one forty-one, it's the beginning of the debt service. Page one forty-two goes into a little more detail. It details the, uh, breakdown between principal and interest. But actually, if you go to the appendix, that's the detail of all the debt that the city currently has. And the breakdown is between the school and the general government. That is in the appendix, page one seventy.
The absolute last page of the budget book.
Show me what, million?
Um, it's not a, just a, a, a one item. I'd have to give you the amortization schedules for all our debt. This is a summary that reflects the payment and the principal, um, due for the FY twenty-six, um, outstanding debt. So it's, it's, you're not gonna see a five million dollar, uh, item standing alone here. It's a combination of all our debt, which includes everything we currently owe in terms of the principal and interest. This is just like a very summary detail. Otherwise, I'd have to give you a lot of pages to show you the amortization schedule, which I've happened to do.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna to, I wanna see it on the budget. So far, you're showing me two pages that is not showing me the five million. So I wanna see the five million dollars that is being used for that specific, uh, section that we allocated money for.
Yep.
Because I mean, if we, if we using it for that, and we allocated for that last year, I have no issue with that. But I mean, if we're using it to balance the budget and using it for something else, then that might become an issue. So I wanna, I wanna make sure, like, if it is for that, that's fine, but show it to me on the book. I mean, if you don't have the answer right now,
Yes.
fine, we can discuss this later, we're not, we're not gonna be here for one day.
Yes, as you remember, uh, when the, the city embarked in the constructions of these two new schools, we did not do an override, um, the city chose not to, uh, accept the override, and therefore, the city was responsible to cover this debt. Um, so one of the things that, uh, we identified as a funding source was the money that was transferred due to the money that came to the city from ARPA. So at that time, the amortization schedule that was done for the two new schools and the police station, uh, detailed what the debt service associated with these three, three projects was gonna be per year. So when this was identified, then we, um, um, identified the three projects and what that was gonna mean in terms of the additional debt service that was required to be paid. So I can provide you with the amortization schedules that reflect the amount of money needed for principal and interest for these three projects, and then you'll be able to see, uh, what's required and what we're appropriating from the debt service stabilization reserve fund.
Uh, on the, um, on the book, the, this is the, on page one seventy, you have the, the schedule of standing, the schedule of debt outstanding for as of, uh, June thirty, uh, twenty twenty-six. So, so if I analyze this page right here, uh, when I go to the debt service for the, the two schools and the police department,
Yep.
I should be able to see the five million dollars here.
Well, it's, it's, it's built in there, but I can show you, like, if you go on the school section, um, we have the Oliver School, the outstanding debt is sixty-six million dollars. But then you'll see the, uh, payment interest, two-point-two million, as well as the principal interest for six hundred and fifteen thousand. Then we have the Leahy School, which is right under it. It has the interest and principal, and then under the general government, um, towards the middle, towards the end of that general government section, is the police station. And that shows the principal and the interest related to that as well. So these three projects represented here, it's broken down between principal and interest for those projects, and that's, um, approximately about the five million dollars that we're transferring from the debt service.
When we were discussing this, um, some of the, some of the projects were gonna come out, and that was money that it was gonna be used for this three project. And the excess amount that was not covered by that, uh, by the, by any amount of money that we didn't have at that time, because we didn't have the funds, was gonna be, uh, the payment, extra payment that it was gonna be covered with the twenty million dollars. Uh, but I'm seeing that out here, we paying the entire amount. So it's like the schedule, the scheduling is not quite reflecting the excess amount of dollars uh, that we were supposed to pay instead, what we're doing, we're paying the entire thing.
I'm not sure I'm following your question, I'm sorry.
So essentially, uh, once we have the schedule,
Mm-hmm.
uh, of debt, there is some loans that we pay. And that, that, that debt capacity was gonna be used to pay for the schools and the police department. And any extra that didn't cover that amount, for some amount of years, we're gonna use the twenty million dollars to cover the extras, not the entire amount, not the entire debt. Because obviously, twenty million is not gonna be enough to pay for the entire project, it's about three hundred million dollars project. So it's, it's like what you're showing me here is that for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we're gonna be covering the entire amount for the schools and the entire amount, uh, for the police department with the mon- with the, with that, with that twenty million dollars. Is that correct?
That was, what was agreed upon when we chose to use that money, transfer from ARPA to cover the debt service, the additional debt service. Obviously, we do have regular debt service, we have all borrowings that we are currently paying, but this is the additional debt service related specifically to the two new schools and the police station.
So if I add this number up, that would be about five million dollars?
Yes, and I, and I do have to, um, also add that we will be, uh, uh, borrowing additional money, because we did not borrow the full, um, authorized money that we needed for the two schools. So we are in the process of also, um, adding additional monies that is required to complete the two, the two new schools and the police station. So we came, uh, we came before the council, and we got authorization to borrow, but we did not borrow the whole, up to the whole amount. So now that the projects will be done, I believe in June, is when the schools will be done. And there's still gonna be a period of time where, uh, things are gonna have to, uh, be reviewed, and I, I believe it's a year, in terms of what the cash flow shows, that they will still need money to pay things as they get completed, they go through the punch list, and, and, and then they identify things that need to be paid. So we do need to borrow the additional money that we were authorized, but we did not borrow at the time. So it'll be additional borrowings added to this as well.
Alright, can you send me more details?
Yes, absolutely.
On that, so I can be, I can be able to just find the really answer from the data?
Yes, of course.
Yes, I mean, I didn't push the button, but I mean, can you send me more details about what we just discussed? And how we're gonna add up to the five million dollars that we actually use in to balance the budget?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Counsel, Counsel, Counselor Luzzon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, CFO, um, I have a few questions, if you don't have it, please feel free to email it to the committee or to have it ready for our next meeting. What is available for the free cash that we have right now?
Yes, I do have. A minute. I believe there's an item on the agenda from the fire department for seven hundred and sixty thousand, which has not been approved yet, uh which will be hitting our free cash as well. But the balance as of right now is fifteen million, seven thirty-seven, five forty-one, which is the amount that was approved by the DOR. So no charges have been hit against the the balance. So that was the amount that was certified and is the balance that we have as of today.
And for our loans, do we have any idea how much we have left?
Um, so if I could explain that a little bit.
Didn't we transfer that to free cash?
Yes, it was all transferred to free cash. Yes.
So there's no funds saved?
Yes, so that money was transferred to free cash. Our free cash certify in twenty twenty-two was forty-two millions, nine hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and two. And in twenty-three, forty-three million, two eighty, four hundred and seventeen thousand. Our free cash is average about fifty million dollars a year. So if you add those two years, you will realize that that includes the additional ARPA fund that was transferred to to free cash. Um, I do have a detail of things that we use the free cash for I can provide to you. It was about fifty-seven million and twenty million out of the free cash was transferred to the debt reserve for uh the stabilization reserve for debt service, like I mentioned before, for the two new schools and the police station. But I can give you the detail of all the transfers. Seven million plus was to clean up the deficits that were incurred, that were related to the FEMA deficits that we had. So there there were a lot of cleanup that was done um using that free cash money, but I can definitely give you the detail.
So in in plain English, we don't know.
Thank you, Madam Clear. So all the funds that we had available at all the phones, all the ARPA phones are transferred to free cash. Is that what we are saying here?
Yes, the the money was transferred to free cash and a lot of that money was put into stabilization reserves. It is my understanding that the CAFO provides a quarterly report to the counselors. And in that report, I don't know if you remember, we did include the schedule of reserves and that has the list of everything that we have in the reserve. And a lot of those reserves were billed from the money we received from the ARPA funding.
And I'm gonna make this comment for the record, nothing to do with my question to the CAFO, but for the record, the four hundred thousand dollars that this administration and uh promised to Federación Hispana de Comerciantes and it was approved by this council. So uh it's the money is not frozen, so right now there's no money there.
Oh, okay, let me explain to you, Counselor.
Thank you.
I understand now where you're coming from. There was some money that was appropriated for different departments. I believe it was called Thriving Lawrence. And that was sixteen million dollars. And that four hundred thousand that was appropriated for Federación Hispana, I believe is still there. So that has not been, the money that was appropriated was assigned per the council's wish uh to the different organizations and it will not be given to another organization unless the council approves so.
Thank you for saying that. For the record, for the people that are watching and wanted to know about the four hundred thousand uh dollars promised to Federación Hispana, so they are still there. So thank you for mentioning that. I have another question in regards to, and maybe enlighten me. Why do we use a level funded budget? Why did the city use that type of budget? Because other municipalities, they use something different. Would you mind explaining to the people that are watching and to myself why that type of budget is used by the city?
Yes, so as you know, Proposition Two and a Half limits the amount of money that the city can um add to the taxpayers in terms of funding. And that's one of my um slides that I would like to review with you when I do the revenues. So um with limited resources, limited funding and additional expenses, for example, the health insurance for this year, it's at least ten percent. That's a huge increase. The pension assessment is over four hundred thousand. So with the limited resources that the city can get, um, we do have to be responsible and 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 careful allowing increases in different departments to make sure that we do have a balanced budget that's responsible and it doesn't affect the taxpayers. Um, I'm sure you all have that in 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 the best interests of the residents. Um, so basically, we want to provide levels, we have we want to provide better service with as leas as less money um that we can. So two and a half percent is only about two point five million dollars. And with an increase in health insurance over a million dollars, pension over four hundred thousand, uh trash over three hundred thousand, there's really not a lot of space for us to add anything else. So we do ask the departments to consider a level funding budget. And then if there's anything that is required or it's needed um to um present it in a letter or in a memo and the mayor with the administration reviews. And then they um prioritize in in level in terms of what's the best thing for the city.
Thank you so much for that explanation and 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 it makes sense. And um and two years ago, we saw a lot of salary increase and we had the same level of of fund uh budget. So I'm assuming after your explanation that um that salary increase, uh, and I know we're gonna get some, but based on the reason why the city chooses chooses to have a label funded budget, it it it's telling me, uh, and the people that are watching, that perhaps a salary increase should not be their priority for this budget. That's my opinion as a city counselor. Uh, because the way that you explain it is that it's very con this type of budgeting is very conservative. It 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 doesn't go the extra mile because of the type of community that we are in. So hopefully, uh, that is also represented um in 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 the salaries. Because we tend to see increases in salaries that don't make sense with this type of budgeting that we use. But thank you for that explanation. And I had another question, if I may, Madam Clear. You mentioned that the negotiations with the union ended.
Well, I I probably should rephrase that.
Okay.
The the current contracts with the union expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So we are currently in negotiations for our next contract with all the unions.
So what I'm gonna find here, if any salary that has to do with the uni the the union, what I'm gonna find the here is previous negotiation, I'm assuming.
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, thank you for the clarification. Um, I don't have more questions, Madam Clear. Thank you, CAFO.
Council President.
Yes, and CAFO, just going back to page one seventy very quick. This is with me, but I just wanna make sure like we we looking at the cent ten. Uh, the general government under the police station, that uh that's the loan that you're referring to? Municipal purpose one, two thousand twenty-two, police station. And it was done on February ten, twenty twenty-two, and is is gonna be over on February first, twenty twenty fifty-two, for the amount of eight million, five hundred and seventy-five. That's one of the loan that you're referring to? So the total amount of principal payment is hundred and seventy-five thousand. And the interest payment is one two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That's correct?
Yes.
That's one of them. Okay, and the other two from the school, can you point it out for me very quick?
Sure, the Oliver School. If you if you follow the outstanding, it's the sixty-six million dollar outstanding debt.
Okay, the Oliver School, that's a total amount of so that loan was um was executed on um February ten, twenty twenty-two. Uh, and that was for the total amount of sixty-six million, seven hundred and ten. And that uh principal payment for that is six hundred, six hundred and fifteen thousand. And the interest is two million, two hundred and fifty-four, three twenty-five, correct?
Correct.
All right, and what is the other one?
The Leahy School.
The Oliver and?
Uh, the outstanding, it's the one that's at thirty-seven million.
Okay, and the total amount for that is uh seven hundred and fifty?
Total amount for that is seven hundred and fifty thousand for the principal payment and then uh one million, five hundred and six and eighty-nine, four fifty, correct?
That's correct.
So the total amount for that is about five point six million dollars. Uh, the entire loan and the entire amount related to uh the the entire debt service for that. But the intent of the twenty million dollars was not to pay the entire amount. It was the excess amount.
Supplement, to supplement the debt service.
Can you can you explain to me as of why we're using total of five million dollars from that from that account when the intent of that account was to pay the excess amount, not the total amount?
Well, it's for the two schools and the police station, so we're actually covering less than what we should. Because if it's five point six million dollars that we just came up with, it's actually less. We're only supplementing it by five million dollars. Because remember, that additional debt was not done under an override. The city is funding that. In order for us to be able to fund that, we are using the money that was transferred to the stabilization reserve for debt service. That was the purpose of that.
No, what I what I mean is that previous previous years, we actually paid for that debt service. Because the loan, the loan was wasn't two thousand twenty-two.
Right, so as you could see in your in your budget books, we have been paying it out of the free cash because we had not done a transfer to the debt service stabilization yet. So it was kinda like the same thing, just coming from a different source. Instead of coming for the debt service stabilization reserve, it was coming from the free cash, but it was the same idea. It was to cover the additional money spent on the the schools and the police station. So I believe it was one one year was five million, five hundred, another year was five million dollars, but we've been doing that for a few years right now.
Just just send us some more information as of why. I wanna make sure like I have all the data.
Yeah, absolutely.
And and definitely, I need my glasses to be able to see these numbers from previous years.
Yes, so if you if you go to that appropriation page for the last two or three years, it shows the amount exactly that that we're using. And the purpose of that funding was to cover the additional monies we needed for the debt service. So if you I don't I don't have the previous books like you do there with your little library going on. But if you look at that, uh, I think one year was five million, another year is five point five, another year was four point five. So we've been paying that additional money from free cash since we started paying the debt service for the two new schools and the police station for the last three years.
All right, I just wanna make sure like at some point, we're gonna we need to uh that balance it out.
Yes.
So meaning that we're gonna be able to pay with the fourteen something million dollars that we have for debt service, we're gonna be able to pay on that, the the two new school and the and the uh and the police station. So I just wanna make sure like we have the proper scheduling, including the account that we have uh for the reserve in case. So I wanna make sure like we're not using those funds for anything else other than the the debt service.
Yes, yes, that is that is the plan.
We just we just we just doing our job, make sure I make.
Oh, absolutely. And 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 we are doing our job as well. We wanna make sure things are done correctly, yes.
No problem. All right, just send me some info and then that way I can put it together, including the scheduling as of when.
All right. I think that is all set. We are all set for the admin and finance division. However, um, counselors, our CAFO will be with us throughout these budget hearings. So if there are any additional questions that do come up for this division later on, feel free to um let me know and and we'll go back to to these departments. But I think I think your team is all set to go, CAFO. I think, yeah, I think everyone's all set to go. Thank you. So moving on, we now have the city attorney's office. Attorney Huen is here with us. I thought we would have to reschedule you. Because I know you had another meeting, so.
Luckily, he was able to fly through that and get here.
Okay, well, the floor is yours, attorney.
Obviously, you can see there's been, there's a lot of changes and there's a lot of uncertainty in the city attorney's office. I am unfortunately alone again at my office, so there is, you know, it's perspective for the first assistant and second assistant. Um, in addition, as many of you may or may not know, um, one of our personal confidential secretaries are retired. Uh, so you can see there's a great diminution in the, for instance, longevity. Uh, she had worked here thirty-five years, so she got a good longevity check, so that's now gone. Um, we are having her on a part-time basis, so you see the reduction in work hours. That's why it looks like a half of secretary as opposed to a full one. And we have our secretary who's almost, our office administrator who's almost been here almost a year now. And she's fantastic and and working out great. But I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding.
Can you just walk us through your budget? I do see um some decreases here. Just walk us through those and and why um why that's being reflected in this year's budget?
Okay, you can see if if we start on the personal, the detail by subobject, personal services heading top, you see the uh recommendation of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred uh reduction because that and the salary, that would be the loss of um the confidential secretary down. And again, we're anticipating the two salaries for the other attorneys, but they're actually not being paid at the current time. The longevity would just be for me alone. There'd be nobody else subject to longevity. Uh, the purchase and services, um, I'm hoping to keep that down. Obviously, the longer uh my office remains unattended, uh, that that amount, that's um, that's why that one went up. Postage is just an odd one. We, you know, we don't do a lot of postage, but we do some. Other purchase services is is a different one because the as you could probably guess, what we're paid for in the past year, which has not been paid for in the past, is investigators and investigative reports. So that has been coming out of my budget, so that's why there's a five thousand dollar allocated. Hopefully, we don't use any of it. We don't need any of it, but it has to be there just in case, you know, going by the past year's history of it. Um, office supplies is pretty same the same, operating supplies, uh, books and subscriptions, obviously books and, we don't retain the books anymore. The subscriptions are online services and a part of, as this board knows, part of my um my objectives and goals was to make sure that every, all the documents and all the records of my office are online in the cloud and available for the future, so those are those subscriptions. In state, in-state travel is, you know, it it really depends. Considering the last month, um, since the first assistant left, I have gone to Boston twice, Newburyport and Salem, so those are, you know, I I don't think that will keep up at that record, uh, but that's the in-state travel is just. But that's the in-state travel is just, I have to go to those court hearings. Much like today, I went to Andover, but not Andover, but that's, there's nothing for that. Dues of membership are just the bar association dues, plus we have certain dues that we have as municipal lawyers, which allow us to put things online and get answers and questions. Court judgments, you know, that's an amount of money that gets shipped back and forth. I expect in the next year, we will have certain judgments and I'll be addressing that tomorrow night at the city council meeting. Claims, we always do it at a thousand, I mean, it's a give and take. You know, we have, we obviously have it if it involves a vehicle, we have insurance. If it doesn't involve a vehicle, or if it's pothole claim, or a slip and fall claim. We are, we settle the good ones, the ones we know. The people can, we have notice of, the people can prove their case. But we are probably well under many other communities in paying out that. Most of them are in the seven to ten thousand dollar range. Personal services, you see, anticipate one city attorney, one first, one second. I have spoken to the council president. And after we look to the first assistant, we might find that we have more luck looking for a part-time second assistant. That people might be more amenable to taking the job as a second assistant, so I think that's something we're going to pursue. We could get a younger attorney in here that didn't, wanted to put their toes in the water, so to speak, and see if they like municipal law. While keeping, you know, their, let's call it a divorce practice or something on the side. And then, you know, I really think that once, I mean, that's my personal opinion, I say all the time. Once people get involved with this, they're going to like it. And we could transition them into full-time or whatever. Because, I mean, a year ago, we had the perfect situation. We had a well-seasoned first city attorney, well-versed in litigation. And we had a great second city attorney who was learning at an unbelievable pace from the first assistant. And that's what we all try to do, we just try to bring everybody up. Now, obviously, the second assistant attorney got too good at another job, so I've lost her. And the first assistant has moved on, but that's our goal, is just to have the different degrees and keep people rotating through the system, because I think we can do that. I don't know if there's anything else you wish me to address?
Why, this happened when we had our other city, our former city attorney too. Why does the HR department get, when our HR director resigns or et cetera? Why does that acting position gets fulfilled by the city attorney's office?
There is so much you need to know of law and legal in the HR department. HR, their continuing education have so much legal training as well, that it's a natural fit. And by nature, lawyers, you may not believe this, are problem solvers, not problem causers. And you really have to be a problem solver to be in HR. You just get hit with things day after day. So that training makes the person that has that job, you know, perfect for a lawyer.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions or comments pertaining to the city attorney's office budget? Counselor Marmo?
Attorney Huen. I'm going to do my best, I feel like the council was very lenient with last year's budget, considering the heavy increases, that for some reason now, I'm like trying to be cognizant as to each position when I saw in the last year's budget, there was some hefty increases. If I see any increases for this year, I kind of want to have an explanation justifying that. So for example, the second city, not second city, second assistant city attorney. Last year's budget, it was an increase by twenty-eight thousand. And then this year is an increase by five, so within two years.
First assistant.
The second assistant is.
First, I'm so sorry.
The second assistant, there's no increase.
My apology, first. So do you mind going into details as to why within two years, we're having a thirty thousand dollar approximate bump?
Well, the easiest example I can give for you is when people stay in the position, you never really know what the market is. I'm not trying to buffalo you or anything like that. You see my salary right now. A city attorney, starting salary now is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars minimum. So we are well under that. The second assistant is around one fifty, we are under that. And I can bring your comps when it's time to put people in, but that's the problem, is it's such a specific. I mean, it's city attorneys, there aren't many of them, and so the salaries are based, the comps are small. It's not like, you know, you're a mailman and you can compare yourself to forty thousand other mailmen, the comps are small. So that's why, because we want to attract, you weren't, maybe you were on the. It took me a year and a half to find the first assistant city attorney, because there just was nobody out there. And it's like anything, if you require an education, I mean, at one point, my office had over ninety-five years of legal background. That doesn't come cheaply. It, I mean, I could get a city attorney in there tomorrow for a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know what good they would do, I would do all the work and I would have to train them for two years to be able to be competent. But if you want someone that's going to be in there and be able to go to court.
And do the job on day one.
Pardon me?
Be able to do the job on day one.
That's what I'm looking for, is someone to come in. Because as you can see, what happens is that my job, for better or worse, is to be at the beck and call of the city council and the mayor. So that if my job is part two, is to be spending days training people or going to court. Those two don't mesh, because somebody's going to get frustrated that I'm not around, so. And I'm happy, I think it's an excellent question.
I'm going to, it just dawned on me, like, oh, I should, let me see if I could start making comparisons from last year's budget. Because again, it's not just your department, it was across the board. It was a lot of hefty increases in salary, to which I, I believe, my opinion is the council was pretty lenient in not going overboard in doing budget cuts, which I believe we were well within our means to do so. And I think it was our way of, we were being nice. So with this year's budget, I feel like, from my part, I'm going to be, it's not just your department. I'm going to do my best to kind of be cognizant in doing the comparables of every department, especially department heads that received hefty increases last year. And if I see any increases, I want a valid justification as to why is that so?
Sure. And the other thing I like to tell people, and I want to be, my office completely transparent, is that what you're going to find out, that if you pay one attorney a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, he is, or she is taking over the five hundred thousand we're paying to outside vendors, so, outside attorneys. Because the work has to be done, if somebody sues the city, we have to file an answer, whether it's in-house or outhouse. And having in-house is going to be economically beneficial for the city.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, wow, city attorney, you got just one question. You had it easy today.
I appreciate that, I think that will be the last time that happens in a long time.
Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
No problem, okay. And our, no, we, our second to last, we have the city clerks division that covers the city clerk's office, elections, and vital stats and annual listing. Cover city clerk?
Good evening, city clerk Eileen Brunel. As you mentioned, we have three departments that are covered under me. One is the clerk's office upstairs that you're all familiar with, the elections office downstairs, and then the annual listing, which basically comprise the municipal costs related to the census. We do a municipal census every year, I know you're familiar with the federal census, it went every ten years. We do the municipal census annually. It is a level-funded budget, which has been mentioned several times. There was a step increase with the clerical union, I do have six principal clerks, so you will see a step increase for that. Also, one non-union position has a contractual raise, you'll see that. Same number of employees, same titles, no changes. We did move some overtime funds to temporary workers. We moved some longevity funds from my side on the clerks to elections where it belongs. But really, aside from moving line items amongst themselves, the total bottom line is the same number. Except for those step increases and the non-union contractual raise. I don't know if there's any specific questions, or you want to go through it line by line, or whatever's convenient for you, I'm happy to do.
Counselor, is there any questions, anything specific regarding any line items in the clerk's office?
Well, it's like, if that means I can go home, I'm going to run out. No worries, take your time.
Do you still mind going into detail on page fifty-three, every line item?
Sure.
I'm, oh, sweetie, I've been talking without my microphone, Jesus.
Okay, let me start all over. Madam clerk, if you can, please go over on page fifty-three of the budget book in detail of every line item. I am focusing on salary and wages permanent, there's an increase of six thousand eight hundred. And then salary and wages temporary, which is item number five-one-two-zero, there's an increase of ten thousand five hundred. If you could just go into detail in regards to those increases?
Absolutely, no problem. So there's really, when you look at the actual numbers, compare the FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six, you'll see the main is the principal clerks. We have six principal clerks, I have three upstairs and three down, and that is about seven thousand dollars. The six thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars or six thousand eight hundred dollars is the step increases for the three principal clerks. You will see that salary and wages temporary has gone up ten thousand five hundred, it really hasn't. If you look right below that, with overtime, it went down, down nine thousand five hundred. And then the vacation buyback went down one thousand, which if you add that nine thousand five hundred and the one thousand together, you get the ten thousand five hundred for the temporary workers. I don't know if you noticed, I have a student from Northern Essex Community College in our office, she's excellent, and she's been fantastic. But it's more appropriate, she's a temp worker as opposed to having it under overtime. So just, the CFO made a suggestion of having the costs reflected more accurately. So really, we're just moving those up and down. And then right below that is longevity. I do have, I qualify for longevity and also, and I'm going to have another staff person qualifying. So there's a fourteen hundred dollar increase in longevity, is really the only increase in that section aside from the step increases for the principal clerks. So the total bottom line is at eighty-two hundred, which really is the longevity increase, which is contractual. And then the principal account clerk step increases, which again is in contractual, so that's at eighty-two hundred dollars. And then the other money is just basically moved from one line to another, it's not, you know, increase or decrease.
I have no other questions, I don't know if anyone else did.
No questions?
Thank you, I'll see you all tomorrow. All right, thank you both, all very much, thank you.
Yeah, no, did we, did we go over, I had to step out, but elections and vital stats and annual listings?
Not really.
So can we go into elections?
So page fifty-four is the elections. And then page fifty-five is the breakdown that we just talked about for the clerk's office. Again, as you can see, the assistant clerk is there at the top of fifty-five, he stays the same. The principal clerks, again, there's three of them upstairs, three downstairs. They're getting that same step increase that their union is entitled to, so that's the only real increase here. The board of registrars, we have a board of registrars, they do get a small stipend, that is their stipend. There's two, there's three members, and that, none of that is me, that's their, they have a title called clerk. I'm not the clerk, I just want to make sure everyone understands that, but that's for the board of registrars members. There's a salary and wages temporary on there, that is the election workers, it's gone down slightly last year with the presidential election. We have a little bit more workers than we do with the municipal election, so that's really the only decrease there. Same thing with the overtime and the vacation buyback and longevity. Although, I do think he needs a two thousand dollars of longevity, I don't know if we ever resolved that. The assistant clerk does get longevity, no? No, okay. But so, those are the only, like, the decreases there, and I believe those went to the police overtime is where they got to get moved to, yeah. So you will see an increase on the police overtime. There's an interdepartmental, I'm not sure where it is, oh yeah, interdepartmental payroll item. We were finding that the police have gotten raises, deserved raises, I'm not in any way. But we weren't budgeting enough to cover those raises. They do help us substantially with the elections. We have a police officer at every polling location, we have twenty-four polling locations, so there's a lot of them. So that money that came off here is just moved over to the interdepartmental payroll, which is at the top of page fifty-four in the right-hand side, under personal services, that last line. It went up by twenty-two thousand, which is, just came off this side. So again, there's no new money in my budget, some money was just, I would say artfully or skillfully moved around by the CFO, seeing where we weren't spending it, and then where we did need it, and just to make sure everything is covered. But again, no new dollars in this budget. And then the same thing, again, with the last page here on the top of page fifty-six, which is the annual listing, which is the census. And I do want to point out, it looks like we haven't spent all our census money for this year, which we haven't, only because we do like a final mailing to everyone, and that has to go out the last week of May, the first week in June. So that mailing will go out right now, we will spend that money. So it is allocated and it does get spent, but it has to get spent later in the year, just based on the state regulations of when those census cards go out. So that final mailing is being prepped right now, and that will go out. We'll prep it for the end of May and it'll hit homeowners at the end of, in the beginning of June, so. But again, everything is same amounts of money, just shuffled around a little bit.
Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, madam clerk.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
You too. The last item for tonight's, the revenue review. I guess, yeah, yeah. Oh, this is for the, with the expenditures, yeah, no, we'll do this together Wednesday, with the expenditures and the review, yes, 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 yes. Sorry, sorry about that. All right, so councilors, looks like we are done for tonight. Can I have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Motion that are made by the vice chair, signed by the council president, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and the ayes have it, thank you so much, enjoy this early night.